Start. Should be me. Yeah, there we go. All right.
Hi, Gus.
Hey, Pete. Hey, Christine.
Chris, thanks for the video backdrop instructions. I figured it out from your instructions. So thanks. I spent some time on that before that, too. Without success.
It helps to have two teenagers in the house.
Hi, Chief.
Hi.
Not my dog.
Let me shut my door.
Not that one. Although my dog starts making noise right about the time I get on a conference call as well. So can be quiet all day long. And then when somebody calls, the barking starts downstairs at the front window.
Well, normally I do this from my living room, but I'm not so confident that my eight year old is not going to turn the TV on to some skin show while I'm talking. So.
Christine, for the record, this is just a glass of water.
I'm not judging. The fact that you even addressed it indicates it might not be.
You'll you'll be able to figure out halfway through this meeting. Actually, probably the fact that it's going to go for a while suggests really it is water.
I didn't get a chance to look at the agenda. We have a lot on it tonight.
Ah. Hill Street School Energy Committee.
It's a loaded question.
Security at the State Hospital. Operating budgets.
Some level, it seems simple.
Hi, Mike.
Pete, how are you?
Very fine. Thanks.
And I'm glad to see that the tie wearers have a majority in the board once again.
You know, if I had just.
Just spot the lawyers, this crew.
If I just downward, if I just go down a little bit, you really don't know. I did. I did put a clean, long sleeve shirt on. I got out of my short sleeve shirt, though, just for the record. Fresh off the dry cleaner hanger.
I'm actually wearing my uniform pants as opposed to the sweatpants I'm normally in for this.
Hi, Nick.
Okay, I think you're ready to go.
Okay. Oh, I've got to find that. Start the meeting language. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Medfield Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in person attendance of members. Should say by members of the public will be permitted. But every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately assess the proceedings as provided by for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may do so by following the instructions on the agenda and the meeting notice. All votes subject to remote participation and therefore will be roll call votes. And with that, I guess we're ready to start our meeting. We have been starting with a moment of appreciation for our troops who are serving around the world. So let's do that first. Thank you. So this has been quite a remarkable week. I think one of the in Medfield, certainly one of the one of the notable things was the truly remarkable high school graduation that was conducted on with the rolling rally. I thought it was just a dramatic event with huge amounts of resident participation. I saw feedback from parents and students that they certainly appreciated it. And and so I think it I my sense was that it worked really well. And and that people enjoyed it and had a lot of fun with it. So I think that that was a a great success. And and I'd like to give kudos to all the people that participated in planning and executing that event. It's the type of event that that I think that Medfield residents do really well when we come together around something. A shared event of that sort. I just wanted to take a moment because there have been some dramatic events in our country this past week to say that we also all of us experienced watching a man die in the hands of the police and officers in Minneapolis. And and it was just documented for us in a very difficult way for us to appreciate. But and then it's been a week in which our citizens have been letting everyone know their displeasure with the continuing racism in our country. And and then it's been a week with the with these massive protests where criminal elements have taken opportunities to take advantage of the of the large number of people that are out, unfortunately. I think that 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 as a group, we're really longing for healing and for normalcy. And and we're clearly all longing to get our lives back from the way we had them before the virus came. I I just was remarked today that the fact that I heard two black mothers say that neither one of them would let their teenage son go jogging in this country. And that just shocked me. I I don't have a solution for this situation, but I think that I think that if we work together, that it's somehow we can we can make some progress. I just think we need to start paying more attention to it. Gus and I sat through a a presentation in January at the Massachusetts Municipal Association on Racism. And at the time, Gus, I thought to myself, why is the Mass Municipal Association doing something on racism? Well, now I know. It's it. They had been invited to come to Arlington to address issues there. It it clearly is something that all of us should be looking into. So with that, let's start our meeting. I guess we I guess the chief's going to present something first.
I felt I felt it was important to take a little bit of time and reflect on this past week and the video that we all saw, which was disturbing to any reasonable person. But I also, as I thought over this this week, I felt like even though we are a small town that seems very insulated from these types of events that I would be doing a disservice if I didn't comment in my professional capacity on it as a longtime police veteran. Especially someone who came from a larger city with a very diverse population. I've seen policing on both sides of the spectrum. I did prepare a brief statement. It's posted on Twitter and it will be on our department website as well for people to view. And if I have your permission, I'd like to just read it quickly.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Like many Americans, I was saddened and shocked by the graphic images associated with George Floyd's death. Police officers have a duty and responsibility to protect others, including those that are in our custody. We have a moral and legal obligation to intercede when we witness abuse, even when conducted by one of our colleagues. As a police leader, I decry the actions of those officers who would betray this oath. Our profession requires to hold ourselves to a higher standard, and our community deserves it. The callous disregard for human life by the officers on scene stains every one of us who wears the uniform proudly. As leaders, we need to insist on professionalism, compassion, fair and impartial policing from our officers. We have a duty to carefully and consistently listen to the pain and fear that some of our community is experiencing. We are obligated to stand up, acknowledge our misdeeds and learn from our past. Simply, we must demand change in our profession and earn the trust of the people we serve. That was about as concise as I could put my thoughts. They certainly ranged from being troubled, disturbed, embarrassed for our profession. And I had to I had to remind myself that the majority of police officers are good people that want to help the public and were equally as offended and appalled by what they saw. The bigger issue for us is what's happening in the country right now. And I don't think there's any clear message being sent out to police executives and elected officials that there is a perception of injustice in in our society and mistreatment of certain groups and populations within our communities. And we have to start listening because that pain is very real. So you know, this hopefully out of the terrible things that are happening in our nation right now, we can learn from it and start the healing process.
Thank you, Chief. I thought that was very nicely put. I would just add that one of the other feelings that I've been having watching this on the news is a feeling of sadness for the police officers and what they're having to put up with. And it can't be easy. It's got to be very difficult for all the police officers to be going through this as well. Clearly, they don't want to be facing these crowds of people either. So Mike or Gus or Chris, Nick?
Sure. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate it. And I think I would echo what Pete said. I mean, this has just been a reminder again that you know, our country has been founded on really the highest of ideals, right? It's founded on the principle that we are all created equal and we are endowed with inalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And that ideal has not always been lived up to, and the promise of that ideal has not always been fulfilled. And the burden of the failure to fulfill that promise has fallen most especially on African Americans. You know, from the earliest days of our country. And you know, the our constitution's basic principle is to restrain the power of the government to protect the citizens from the government. And that basic principle has also not always been fulfilled, as we saw dramatically this past week, but it has recurred throughout our history. And and again, African Americans have have suffered disproportionately at that failure of the constitution to be fully that protection of the constitution to be fully extended to everybody. And I think there's a we've gotten some notes from some citizens and young people and talking to my children about it. And there certainly is a sense of both anger and frustration, a measure of despair at the notion that these things are being driven by kind of institutional and systemic forces that seem like they're beyond the control of anyone. And I think what I would would say to that is, and and we see it here tonight, is that that while that is true, the systems and the institutions are made up of human beings and the choices that human beings make and the kind of leadership that is shown within those institutions matter. And incidents such as that happened in Minneapolis would not provoke outrage if they were genuinely isolated. And if it was the only time it had happened in the last 20 years, it would still be outrageous and evil, but it would be an incident as opposed to a reflection of a larger issue. And I think when those things happen, there is a failure. It represents in many cases a failure of kind of moral leadership. But at the same time, there can be successes of moral leadership. And as you say, Chief, not every police officer is represented by what that officer did or what the three officers who stood next to him while he did it did. And I think leadership matters. Local leadership matters. The leadership of our police departments matter. And not only the people who have the titles of leadership or the particular badge or a particular rank, but leadership being shown by all of our officers. And I will say that we recognize and have to recognize that no community is immune from this. I was listening to a kind of a update kind of on the statistics of this. And and there's been increases where there has been increases in police killings over the last four or five years. It has happened more in suburban and rural communities than than in big cities. It's actually declined in some of our big cities. And so that leadership is important. And I do want to say that that, you know, I have confidence in the men and women of the Medfield Police Department. I have confidence in Chief Garrett and in Deputy Chief Anderson that they will lead this department appropriately. I think policing is is a noble profession, and it is one that rightly deserves the respect of the citizenry. And but it is a respect that has to be earned, as the chief noted. And I I have confidence that our police department and our police chief and deputy chief will work to make sure we earn that respect. They earn that respect and are deserving of the badges they wear. And I will I will say that for my part as overseeing that, I hope that we too, as a Board of Selectmen, will set that tone from the top with respect to how we want our officers to act and how we want the people in the town to interact with them. So, Chief, I appreciate your being here. I appreciate your saying this and the leadership you're showing by being here that you've shown throughout your tenure in the department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I can make a couple of comments. One, speaking personally about the national issue. I have maybe a little dip perspective on a few things. One is that the national issue. I think the event in Minneapolis is probably an event that has unified has had a unified response from Americans across the country. I wouldn't be surprised if it's to a greater degree than any other event like this that's ever occurred. I don't know of anybody who's trying hard to justify rationalize, excuse, ignore what happened in Minneapolis. I don't know of anyone who even is coming even remotely close to trivializing it. And what pains me is that this issue at the national level is unfolding in a way that's largely race based racially focused and divisive in terms of its effects. At a time when, to me, it's a place where when we when we aspire to something for this country where we're all Americans, we all come together. If there was ever an event that seems like it sparked that unified reaction, it was the killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis. And I I just watched what's happened since, and it feels like much of that's been eroded. The second point that I'll make is, and this is chief in response to your statement, having at other times in my life been member, a member of an organization that held honor and integrity and ideals up to a very high standard. And I qualitatively on a par with what I think the police profession does. One of the things I've learned over my life is that even when you're in an organization like that, there'll be failures. Some of those failures will be true deliberate failures, and those people have to be flushed out. Some of those failures will be mistakes. And there'll be mistakes maybe by people who think superficially about circumstances and situations, and they lose sight of the ideals and the and and what what they stand for. And for a bit, they just lose sight of it, and they don't act that way. The reason I bring that up is that if you're part of an organization that has those kinds of ideals and standards, a failure in that organization doesn't erode or negate those standards. And the place that you have to go from there is you pick up and and you again re aspire to achieve or maintain those standards. And that's the only response that can come from that because there is no organization that has those standards that 100% of the people abide by 100% of the time. So how we recover from those things can be very important. The last point I'd make to to Mike's comment at the end there about the the town. One of the things that that gets at me, having seen these kinds of issues for a long time is we like to have philosophical, broad stated statements, and we make observations at the national level. We make observations about what we, in an anonymous sense, should do. And we don't really drive it down to what we individually or at local levels need to do. To Mike's point about this town, it would be my hope that there's not a single citizen in this town that for a minute would be worried about their right and their welcome to come before this Board of Selectmen with any issues that are on their mind to come and speak what's on their mind, and that they would not perceive in any of the three of us or anyone in town government that there's any reason why they should be reluctant to come forward. Can't promise they get anything, everything they want on all circumstances. But there should be no reason why anyone in this town, I would hope, there'd be no reason that anyone in this town would ever be reluctant to come to see us with issues that are on their mind to have talks with us about whatever weaknesses, shortfalls, flaws they see in this town and would trust that we would hear them, that we would seriously take their views into account if we don't give them what they want as they want it, that we at the very least explain to them what it is we're thinking and why we are where we are in our decisions. Even there, if they walked away, they wouldn't feel like they couldn't come back and take another run at the argument if circumstances changed. I I think that's how you get at this is right here with us, with the people that are here, not with broad pronouncements. And otherwise, we just keep having this discussion. Thanks, Pete.
Absolutely. Chris or Nick? Anything further?
I just wanted to to thank the chief also for being here. We've been in constant contact over the last week of what Medfield can do and what we should be saying and what our approach to this is. And I want to thank everybody who's reached out the last few days with advice on what to do, what they can do, what the town can do. The chief and I will continue that dialogue. And Kathy McDonald, who is our new Director of Youth Outreach, has offered to put together a group to continue a discussion as well.
Good. And and the young lady that we had talked about doesn't want to address us?
I thought Olivia would be here. I don't see her on the list of attendees. She had asked to speak, but I don't see her on there. If she does join, I will I will recognize her.
We had we had heard from Olivia Taylor, who's a student at Northeastern, a Medfield resident, and she had sent a very eloquent email to the Board of Selectmen members. And if she's there, please come forward and you can speak.
I actually I reached out to her prior to the meeting tonight in response to her email. And I've received a number of emails as well as well. The majority of them are pretty consistently focused in the fact that they want to know the type of training that police officers get, that our officers get. How that training is delivered. And then what my approach is as a police executive is to dealing with these issues in our community. And the response is the same. Our officers. Our officers get extensive training in this curriculum at the Police Academy about fair and impartial policing, bias-based policing, implicit bias, de-escalation tactics. We continue that training on annual basis. We do an additional 40 hours of in-service training as well as some specialized training that I send the officers to. But I think much to all of your point, this is a leadership issue. This is a top-down issue and I have to set the tone for what I expect from our officers. I like to think I did that during my initial interview with the board over a year ago, where I said that the community drives our performance, that they dictate to us what's important. And race relations and fair and impartial policing are important to this community. So it has been a very important part of my routine with the officers. I think our officers do their very best to execute the law in the most consistent way possible. We have very low use of force throughout the year. That's a testament, of course, to our community and their compliance, but it's also a testament to our officers' restraint and de-escalation abilities. I've made it abundantly clear that if somebody in my organization acts outside of that philosophy, that it will be dealt with swiftly. So, you know, I think that I set the tone and then we address any issues that come up on a very swift and in specific way.
Thank you, Chief. I guess our next issue is an appointment with Mike Quinlan to provide a Dale Street update.
Good evening. Well, that's going to be a tough, but in all seriousness, and I'm sorry the chief signed off. But I just want to thank you all and the chief for your leadership. That's what is really needed in these times is leadership. It's not often easy to come by, but I have a lot of confidence, not only in all of the members here, but in our state representatives and our governor, who have shown leadership over these last couple of months with the pandemic. It's only going to be further challenged by these racial issues that we're going to face as a country. So thank you all for your leadership. So transitioning on to this behind me. Talking, just wanted to give you all a quick update on on the Dale Street School project. Last time we spoke, I think with the entirety of this group, you know, we were back with the quad board meeting with the school committee, with the warrant committee and Board of Selectmen, along with the school building committee. Coming out of that meeting, there was some, certainly some reservations that we heard from the Board of Selectmen about how the public felt and gathering more information and and certainly the impacts of COVID. We had information to heart and subsequently at the end of April, voted to postpone the project one board cycle or two months. Gather some more information, do some more public information gathering. And we subsequently did that through the month of May. When we held our public forum, it was very well attended, which was great. And we appreciate the efforts of all of you. I know there are a lot of people here that helped push, push that information out, especially Christine, who did a great job getting it to all of the boards and committees and and the leadership throughout the town. And so we, we had what I thought was a very successful public forum. We got a lot of information out to the, to the public. We received a lot of questions back. I forget the exact number, but we answered a lot of them that evening going almost, almost until about 10 o'clock at night. And the majority of that was answering questions and feedback, as I know you all were present. So we subsequently sent out a survey, which I wanted to update you on really quickly. And it was, I think, well responded to. And if it's okay, I'll try to share it on my screen. Is that okay?
Yep.
Enable me.
Yep, let me enable you. Go, should be all set.
Can you all see that?
Yep.
Okay. First question was basically trying to gather some information about who we were talking to with the survey, or at least who was responding to it. As you could see, about 60% was people with kids that are currently in the Medfield schools. Whereas the remaining 40% either didn't have kids, their kids have graduated, or their kids are just not in the schools yet. And so that just gave, gave us an opportunity to sort of get a feel for, you know, who we were talking to. Then the next question we started, wanted just to keep it very basic about how people felt about the grade configuration discussion. I think that there's certainly more top, more discussion to be had on this, but we wanted to just to sort of get a very basic response about people's thoughts on it, whether they had enough information on it or if they had any preference whatsoever. As you can see, it, it appears that the community, for the most part, you know, it was out probably, you know, 34% to 25% was in favor of the three-grade configuration. However, what the, what was most telling to me as part of this was that 24% still felt they didn't have enough information to decide. So that's something that I personally took to heart and we'll talk more about what we're going to do about that moving forward. Next up, we wanted to understand what the town's feels were for priorities and ask people to sort of pick three. It's pretty obvious that the first and foremost priority was, was the overall cost and tax impact, obviously, given the scale of this project, given the, the, the ask that we're potentially putting in front of the community. That's going to be certainly high on people's minds, certainly as we work through some challenging economic times. Second, the, the town still feels that educational benefits for the students is, is a huge priority. I think that sort of tells you a lot about, you know, what we are as a town. I think people understand the, the educational benefits is extremely important. And then the, the last one, just in sort of in, in looking at sort of the top three was, you know, flexibility to manage enrollment fluctuations in the most cost-effective way. And I think this references back obviously to, to costs in, in, in a bit of a different way in that it's more thinking about long-term costs and how we manage operations, how we manage the function and the future of the whole school system. I won't go through each of these. The, we also asked people for if there was another concerns. And there was a good list here of 55 other concerns, a lot of which, you know, refer back to similar things about cost, et cetera. But there are some other good information in here. And this has all been posted publicly, so it should be easily accessed. Fourth question was, which of the two sites being considered for the new Dale Street project do you prefer? It, it appears that the, the plurality at this point is, is for the Dale Street property. And the Wheelock property was behind that by about 13%. And then again, about 23%, not enough information. So that's what I really took away from this. As I dug into a little bit more of the details, I think one of the things that I was interested to read was, I think people have a misperception that adding and rent and renovating the Dale Street School in place is significantly cheaper. I've heard people throw around, we can save $50 million and that's just not okay. So we have some work to do just to educate people on, on that topic in particular. I'm not saying it's not a viable option, just saying that people often think that that just is going to save a bunch of money and that's just not really. So, and then, you know, again, we sort of jumped around there. And then we basically asked, what other questions or concerns would you have that the committee should address? We received 300 answers. I won't go into them individually. They ranged from, you know, support to people saying, we're, we're going to vote against it no matter what you do. So there's a pretty wide range of data here. I tried to, you know, go through this and I'm still going through this and try to really delve into the ones that are based in, in logic and reality and not on emotion. But there's, there's just a lot of data here. So I won't go into those because I know you have a full agenda tonight. So we took all that information and discussed it at our building committee meeting last week. And based on that, I recommended to the committee that we postponed the, the submission of the next milestone by an additional two months. So it would be four months from our original schedule, based off of two things really. One is, is really evaluating what COVID is going to mean. I think an additional two months will allow us to sort of see how we come out of this as we start to open up again. Is this going to be a short-term thing, a long-term thing? We're, I think we'll have a lot more information within additional four months. While not, it doesn't sacrifice the end date. This would, we can still achieve that by August of 2024. So there's no real risk to the town to do that. And in the meantime, we can gather some more information from the public, do a bit more presentation to, to share some more data. And hopefully, those numbers in terms of the people who feel that they don't have enough information start to put down. And as well, reach out to any people who may not have been able to participate in the public forum or in the survey. So overall, I was pleased with the numbers. There were over 150, I forget the exact number, it was over 150 people at the public forum and over 850 responses to the surveys. So I found the information valuable. I know some will critique it about, oh, it's not scientific and blah, 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 blah. I found the information very helpful and somewhat telling. I think it's a significant enough response for us to take something out of it. So last week, we voted to delay an additional two months and we are working on a work plan on how to proceed. We've had some conversations with you about grade configuration discussion, which will be ongoing, and then also the site selection. We are in the process of completing some of the work that's needed to help evaluate both sites, including geotechnical borings that happened over the last week. We don't have results from that. It's a few weeks out. I am happy to report that it doesn't appear we've encountered any ledge. So that's, that's good news for us on, on either site. We were a little surprised by early data, which appears to show that the water table is higher at Dale Street than at Wheelock. So we're going to have to evaluate that and see what that's going to mean for comparison of the project. So, and then, you know, as, as I've noted to you all in the past, we're working on trying to model some, some traffic studies. I know that's going to be a point of contention, given that we can't do actual studies in person in this time of the pandemic. So we might have to work with as much data as we can from existing operations, from similar projects, similar schools and communities. Something together, so we're working on that. So that's sort of the, the gist of my update. I know we had originally intended, you know, potentially to be asking eventually for you all to, you know, vote. I think we're postponing that, as I noted. And what we're trying to do is plan for sort of late summer, early fall decisions for some of these things. We're planning the next public forum, which will probably focus on site selection. As we start to share some of the data we've been able to gather, that I anticipate will be towards the end of June. So I just wanted to give you an update. We're, we're working on a full work plan for, for the summer and into the fall. And we will share that with you and discuss what your thoughts are on when you will feel appropriately informed to vote on some of these decisions. So that's sort of the gist of what I had tonight, but I'm certainly open for questions. I'm sure there probably are a few.
Mike, are you saying that site selection is end of June?
No, site selection, public forum. So a public forum.
Oh, alright.
We did on grade configuration. One.
What are the expected dates for the site selection actually happening and the grade determination happening?
So we're looking at that now, but we're anticipating that would be probably early September.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Mike, Gus, Chris?
I just, I just want to remind Mike that you have an MSBA project revision request to be signed as well tonight.
Oh, yes, the, the budget revision request.
Yes, $906.
Yeah. So that's, you know, standard paperwork, basically, as we noted before. When we went for proposals for some of the supplemental services, it came in slightly higher than what we had budgeted. So there is a formality with the MSBA, just to ensure that everybody's informed. We discussed it in the building committee meeting. Mike Marrow, she can certainly speak to it from his perspective as well. But basically, it's, it's just adding $906 from our contingency monies into our supplemental services.
So those 17 pages were just to add a, a change of $926?
You gotta get used to it.
Wow.
You haven't seen anything yet, Pete.
A lot of paperwork in construction, I guess.
Wait till, you saw the PDP was 1,200 pages. Wait till we, we get to the PSR, so lots of paperwork.
I would make an observation on the contract document. My name is still down as the page two is the chief executive officer.
We'll change that.
Okay. And then I had a question, Mike, just undoubtedly a dumb question. The, the, the technical services that this is, addresses is only for the Wheelock site?
No. Depending on what you're talking about. So there's, there's multiple ones that this will address. Geotech borings are happening on both sites. Environmental is happening on both sites. Hazmat review is only at Dale Street because that's an evaluation of hazardous materials in the existing building only.
Okay.
Part of that. And then the traffic studies will be for both sites, yes.
Okay, I was reacting to the Hancock Associates letter for surveying services, which was only the Wheelock school.
So this, this, we, we haven't decided what we're doing in terms of survey yet. Basically, to save money, we're trying to only survey the site that we choose. The reason the Wheelock site's in there now is because it's a much bigger site and it's a larger number. So we're in a larger number, which is why it says Wheelock. That said, if we choose the Dale Street site, we will choose the lesser amount for the survey and we just won't spend that money. And that's just a budgeting.
So, so Mike, I, I was actually surprised in the survey to show the, to see the preference for Dale Street from people. And I tried to understand, you know, that's a, the survey had relatively simple questions that probably have more complex thought processes to get to the results. So maybe some of the Dale Street results had to do with people who thought the renovation of Dale's. You know, you may have people who want the new school at Dale Street combined with the people who want just a straight, cheaper renovation at Dale Street and they all came together. But in making, again, I'm, I'm just asking dumb questions, I know. But in making the decision between the two sites, what are the driving factors that would, would?
That's an excellent, that's an excellent question. And I could tell you that we are going to work over the next couple of weeks and into the summer on whittling those down. When we looked at it during PDP phase, we had a, an extensive list of criteria that, you know, aren't necessarily weighted in any particular direction. So I think we need, we have our work cut out for us in terms of how we're going to evaluate the sites and what criteria we're going to use to judge them. Certainly, you know, it's, it's not lost on me that there's, there's some things that people have brought up in terms of, you know, proximity to downtown and, and the, you know, giving freedom to fourth and fifth graders during half-days. And, you know, those, those things are, are, have some value. They're not, you know, completely, it's not completely based on any sort of professional vision. I think some people are truly thinking about what it's going to mean to the students. So I think, you know, both sites are certainly, you know, in contention and, and people who are necessarily otherwise just haven't been part of the process. So I can tell you that there's gonna be different challenges for the Dale Street site than Wheelock, given this much smaller size. And, and as I mentioned, we'll see what happens with the workable issue. You know, Wheelock has its challenges as well and, and we're gonna have to evaluate those. So we're evaluating what it's gonna mean, you know, for those neighbors and what traffic is gonna be a big concern down there. So we got some work to do on that. So I would, I would, it did feel, based on the comments, that a certain percentage, and I don't know what that percentage is, a certain percentage that favor the Dale Street site did so because they thought an ad rental was cheaper. And, and before they make sort of a decision, and this is where the information needs to be distributed, I think, in more detail. And that's why we're planning a public forum to go into more detail, is that it's just not the case. Oftentimes renovating old buildings can sometimes even be more expensive depending on unforeseen conditions and things that you want to cover. I'm not gonna say that's the case here, but I can tell you that, you know, in our, in our current estimates, there's not a drastic gap between a new building and a renovation in addition to the pay. We'll be doing more cost estimating this summer as well, and I think that's an important next step. As we get more detail and start to refine the options we pursue. Getting detailed cost estimating done is going to be key for distributing to the residents who clearly are concerned about that and want more detail than we have right now. So that's another thing that we're gonna be working on over the summer.
Just one other comment on the survey. As somebody who filled it out, the question about the grade configuration and the preference, it's, I was one of the ones who said, I need more information because I, and I know more about this than maybe the average person that filled out the survey. But I, I think that's a hard question to ask the public without having it tied to a price. And probably, in my, in my case, it was like, the reason I didn't just go with the cheaper option or something was that I understand that there's an education philosophy rationale that's driving it. So, you know, price, if you just look at numbers, points you in one direction. What, what works against that is the, the, the under, you know, the overarching philosophy and thought about what the school system configuration needs to be. And I, I would just say, as you go forward to get more information, especially in light of the sensitivity people had to costs, tying that decision around their public preference, grounding it in cost implications, but also helping people understand the rationale for the two configurations, independent, over and above economics, I would think would be important to get meaningful information from the public about their preferences.
I agree. I will say that, you know, you know, I certainly learned a lot from Christine Power from the schools. She was very important part of that info session, I think. I had some other conversations with her offline. We did put a rough price tag to the difference. We noted that it's to the town side, it's 11 to 15 million dollars. And tell you that we are actively looking at options of reducing that number such that it's not as big a delta between a three to five and a four to five. So stay tuned for more information on that. I need to have some, some conversations with the other people before, you know, that becomes public information. But we're doing everything we can to bring down the numbers in general. But we're also, you know, making sure that gap, especially if the town does seem to have a preference for three to five, that the gap between that and a four to five is as small as possible.
Mike, can any questions? We can't hear you. I can't hear you.
I think you're saying no.
We couldn't hear that either. I don't know, your headset's not working.
Yeah.
So that's all for us then, Mike, from Mr. Mike Quinlan.
Yes, and I'll, I'll stick around. I know the energy committee is coming up and there's gonna be questions about what that means for the project. So I will stick around and I'll be.
Did we have to have a vote to approve the signing of that?
You do.
Okay.
Oh, the BRR, yeah. I think last.
Mike, we can't hear you. So maybe Gus, you could make the motion.
Yeah, so I, I moved that we approved the request for, now I got the point. How fast we forget. We just get that we request, we approved the request for the budget revision request number two that Mike Quinlan has requested for the school project.
And I'll second that. And while we're waiting for Mike to get back, I'll ask you, Gus, if you're in favor of it.
I.
I am as well.
We could just say the motion carries two to one abstention.
Yeah, it did, so. But we do want to have Mike as part of our meeting.
Right. I was kind of joking.
Oh, if you can hold on. Now he's probably waiting for me to put him back on.
So a couple of meetings ago, I disappeared because my, I hadn't plugged my laptop into the wall. And usually it gives me a warning that it's gonna, gonna die and it's time to plug it in, but it didn't. It just went off. So I rushed to plug it in and get back on to re-zoom.
Hold on. Mike's here. I just need to promote him. Hold on.
We're waiting for your vote, Mike.
He's coming. Sorry. We actually have 47 people watching the meeting, so it took a little while to scroll through to find him.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I had to rewire the whole headset, a whole big complicated thing. Very technical.
Thanks for doing that for us.
And I'm totally against this change, by the way. I hope you recorded that. $926. You can almost buy a selectmen for that amount.
That term buying a selectmen is appropriately used.
It's actually $900 anyway, not 926, yeah.
So we actually are waiting for your vote, Mike, so.
I, I vote aye.
Excellent.
Thought he was gonna go into the two for one specials.
So then are we on, Krista, the energy committee?
You are. Give me a minute to promote them.
The energy committee is coming to discuss the Dale Street School project and the level of energy efficiency that should be planned for, hoped for. Hi Fred, thanks for coming.
Pete?
Chair of the energy committee, Fred Davis.
Thank you, Selectmen, for having us tonight. And Mike.
Who else can I promote for you, Fred, that's speaking and making a presentation tonight?
Wonderful, thank you. So there would be, Mark Sandin would be after myself.
Perfect.
And Jim Nail after him. And after that would be Megan Sullivan.
Okay.
So I just want to say before I get started that anyone here attending the segments meeting from an interest in Dale Street process, I hope you'll stay online and hear the energy committee's report to you. So I will give a few short remarks. Turn it over to Mark. I'm gonna be introducing and framing our presentation. I also want to mention that Gus, you kindly requested that I report tonight on other energy committee developments, and there have been quite a few. If anybody wants it, when the Dale Street discussion is, is finished, I'm glad to do that. But for now, I just want to report that we continue, the energy committee continues to succeed in moving ahead with projects that save the town a lot of money. We're always working hard for the financial benefit of Medfield. Our position about Dale Street does not stray from that. I hope that will become clear throughout our presentation. I do have three very, very, very simple slides. And are those gonna be visible right away? I don't know.
You should be able to.
Okay, great. So we have a very simple statement here. Does the resolution, can that be seen, by the way?
No, it's not letting you. Hold on one second.
Maybe there's a button I have to push here.
Did you hit, Chris?
Yeah, see, if you have, it says that you should be able to, so.
Let me try it one more time. How's that? Nothing?
Nothing, but it's on my end. You're allowed to share, so.
Okay, so I've got a technical assistant here. One more second. Right. I see. I got a share screen on this side. Sorry about that, folks. And here we go. All right. So the slides are very simple. They're visible now, right? And this is the nutshell of our position statement that we adopted a couple of weeks ago. Net zero carbon emissions. Questions? Can we develop an all-electric building? Yes. Can we develop an all-electric building that is net zero? Yes. Can we develop a healthy building? Yes. Can we develop a building with all these characteristics that is net positive over its life cycle? Yes. Net positive financially, I'm sorry. So we'll come back for the last slide in a minute. So that's it. We can stop with the screen share. Okay. So the energy committee, just so everyone knows, has been meeting since 2008. These days, we have 10 or 11 people attending on a monthly basis. And we really have a lot of dedicated concerned citizens. Seven of the members are long-term professionals and we added it up over, over all of us. There's 175 years worth of experience in the energy field. So it's substantial. These people are active in the field. They're leaders. They've achieved awards in all the various organizations. They bring a lot of deep expertise and I know the town appreciates and respects this profound knowledge base. So reducing energy consumption and solar, those continue to comprise a large part of our efforts. And I wanted to just make sure everybody realizes that the town makes a lot of money when we do pursue these efforts. Because in addition to the dollar savings from energy, there are very significant incentives and those incentives rival or sometimes exceed the dollar savings from energy. So it's not just that we're saving money on energy. We are actually making money in many cases because of the incentives. And that can be in the realm of hundreds of thousands of dollars to our budget each year. Takes a lot of effort, but it can be done. So tonight, I just want to point out, there's a paradigm shift going on in our field. It has been going on for the last couple of years. And it's going on, it's gonna play a larger and larger role. And what I'm talking about is a layer of incentives that go beyond conservation and solar to help move our economy rapidly away from carbon, meaning away from fossil fuels. So on the one hand, this move, this paradigm shift is consonant, overlapping directly with our efforts today. On the other hand, it's going to be significantly different also. And that is gonna take a lot of effort and implementing it in existing buildings is a heavy, heavy lift over the next years. But in new construction, new construction, that's what we're talking about with Dale Street, this imperative is in our field considered, and here my air quotes, easy, or at least it's substantially hugely easier to accomplish. In the last few years, firms like Arrow Street have proven time and again that zero carbon goals are entirely possible in new buildings. A few years ago, only a very few buildings were showing, were proving that. Now, many new buildings are being built with no fossil fuels and projected net zero consumption. So now specifically on the energy, on the Dale Street process, I want to state my, my appreciation to Mike Quinlan and all the Medfielders volunteering to move the Dale Street process along. It's very impressive. There's zillions of considerations. My hat is off to all of you for shepherding this process along and the many, 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 many hours of effort. I also want to say Medfield is fortunate to be working with Larry Spang and Arrow Street. They're well-equipped to do the work necessary to make the new school something that Medfield's gonna be proud of for a long, long time. And the recent King Street project in Cambridge is a model of net zero, net zero new construction. On January 16th, Mike Quinlan came to the energy committee and with the Dale Street Building Committee, and we had a joint, joint meeting. At that time, Arrow Street made a presentation and the energy committee was asked for its input on the energy aspects of new construction. And it makes sense. I just want to point out, it makes sense, Town of Medfield, for the Medfield Energy Committee to be consulted on this. We have the expertise. So we did discuss the question during subsequent meetings. We shared our thoughts with Mike and eventually issued the position statement that you've seen that came out on May, May 21st. Mike then stated that our position warrants a meeting with you, the Board of Selectmen. That's why we're here tonight. We're glad to talk about it. In our position statement, we mentioned, we included mentions of exemplary low or no carbon school, new school projects in 10 other towns in Massachusetts. Kate Bobriski in Arrow Street's presentation to us showed also 10, you know, different, slightly different array of which towns. Those were low EUI schools. And Kate Cullinan of Eversource just provided a list last week of 15 such projects. There's obviously overlap from one list to the next, but just to show we're not on the bleeding edge. There are many towns doing this. And that should be reassuring that many communities are pursuing this. And I want to make very clear that I can't imagine any of those towns are pursuing, doing this work without incorporating large incentives that are available. Those are, those financial incentives are encouraging those projects. And you're going to hear shortly from the next speaker how those all come together in a project. I also want to state something very specific. Kate Cullinan said that Eversource is rolling out right now an early engagement program, which seems to be applicable to the Dale Street process. Those incentive dollars and ballpark for a zero net energy school targeting 25 EUI or less with some summer use. They're in the range of $1.25 to $2.25 per square foot. I don't know, Mike Quinlan, if Dale Street Committee is aware of this particular new source, but I'd recommend it. So the energy committee will continue to point out the need for zero carbon new construction at every opportunity. Other towns have already established overall zero carbon guidelines for all new municipal construction. We came to you with our recommendation, similar recommendation for Medfield State Hospital, and that is being pursued. That is, that process is working through with the Medfield State Hospital Committee. But we will come to you building by building, unless you would like to work with us. Unless, unless you'd like, I would welcome this opportunity, let's put it that way, for the energy committee to help draft guidelines for your consideration. That would be general for each, for all new buildings going forward. So the eyes of Medfield now and in the future are on this particular discussion, on this decision. People will always be rightly concerned about the bottom line. And as I said, the energy committee has always advocated for fiscal prudence. We've never advocated for anything else, including tonight. And I think I would like to just close my comments by saying we should wonder. We should wonder if we don't build a long-term forward-thinking building now. We should wonder whether Medfields, Medfielders will ask next year or 10 years from now or 20 years from now, why did they build a fossil fuel building back in 2020? I thought this town was smart. So there's my challenge for us as Medfield. So one reason I'm so confident about this is because this is done in Lexington and Mark is here to show how it's done. I caught his great presentation at the MMA back in January. And if you selectmen remember, I, I've been attending a few years. You attend every single year and you go to all these sessions. Very impressive. You learn a whole lot of stuff. And when we bump into each other on the floor, you always, we always ask each other, what session are you going to? What session? So I, it's simple for me. I always say, I'm going to the energy session. And you guys always say, oh, great, Fred, you go to that, you tell us about it. Great. I'll go to another one. So here's my report back to you. This one, this presentation was awesome. And we're fortunate that a few months later. And we're fortunate that a few months later, Mark is able to reprise it for you, he's given this presentation to a number of other towns. Mark is a member of Lexington Select Board. And this is a case study of a brand-new school in Lexington, I'll just say, so we can flow after that, when Mark is done, Medfielder Jim Nail will be speaking, he's the President of Massachusetts Interfaith Power and Light. There are other members of the Energy Committee here listening in, at least 10 of them. And if they have further perspective or could address any concerns, that'd be great. And then Megan Sullivan will be reporting on public interest in the subject in Medfield. So that's our outline, that's my introduction, that's our outline, and if we can turn over the slide. Slides for Mark, thank you, everybody.
Okay. Well, thank you for that introduction. Are you able to see these slides now?
Yes.
Perfect.
They're not, they're not yet, and one at a time.
Pardon me?
You might want them to be shown one at a time, they're not viewing that way right now.
Oh, so I have swapped display button here, is that better? Okay. All right, well, thank you for that introduction, Fred. As he said, my name's Mark Sandine, I'm a Select Board Member in Lexington. We held our first virtual town meeting last night with 190 people attending in virtually. It was quite, it was quite an event. What I wanted to talk to you today about was our sort of experience in going through how we got to having a, now two net-zero schools in Lexington. And we asked about three or four years ago, is it possible to develop a healthy, all-electric school building that generates more energy than it uses? And to do that with total lifecycle costs that are lower than conventional design, and the conclusion we came to was yes. And what you're looking at here is the conceptual design from our architects. We actually moved into this building in February and had students in this building for all of three weeks before a COVID crisis asked us to shut it down. But we are now, what you're looking at here is a 110,000-square-foot elementary school building. It's going to house 645 students on a regular basis. And when we started out, the conventional design philosophy was there's no possible way that we can make this be a building that generates all its own energy. And when we asked, why is that? They said, well, because you're going to need to put chillers on the roof, you're going to have air conditioning equipment and that all over the roof, there won't be any room for solar. And we said, well, what if we put an all-electric heat pump in this building and covered the roof with solar? And they said, no, not good enough yet. And we said, what if we designed the envelope, the building in such a way that we could reduce the energy demand by the, for the building by 30%? The design team came back and said, we actually can reduce the design 50% without increasing the extra cost. They've said, but still, we cannot generate enough energy in order to make this happen from the roof. And we said, well, we have these parking lots out in the, in the, in the surrounding the building, what if we put up solar canopies, is there enough room in the parking lots in order to get us to be able to generate all of our energy? And the answer came back, yes. The building is modeled at using 970,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity a year. And the solar on the rooftops and the solar in the parking lots will generate 1.1 million kilowatt-hours of electricity a year. Now, the next part, we said, is can we do this affordably? And one of the things you look at is the energy cost for running a building, a lot of people will talk to you about, especially in Eversource territory in the Northeast. What we found is that our electricity charges are about 45% of peak demand charges. And so we started to say, how would it be possible to reduce our peak demand charges? And we started looking at, can we put storage in the, in the design? And one of the things you find is if you just build solar, this is a graph of our, of our Lexington High School with the solar energy. And what you can see, the blue is the building energy design, it's, we turn our buildings on at 5:00 in the morning and the sun comes up after 5:00 in the morning, so we're getting peak demands well before the solar comes online. And what we decided to do is, can we model this for our new Hastings School? And the top line you're seeing there is what the utility company would be seeing for demand, that blue graph is what the utility company would be seeing. And down below is if we put solar and storage on, that blue is still what the utility would see for the energy going in and out of the building. And what you're seeing here is that we essentially have low, almost zero peak demand during peak demand hours. So I mentioned to you before that the building's modeled needing 975,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity a year. That means we need to use about $135,000 as in per kilowatt hour, you know, sort of the way we normally think about that for our homes. But $115,000 of those charges were peak demand charges. And when we looked at combining solar plus energy storage, we found that we could save $23,000 on those usage charges. But the shocking thing was $93,000 in peak demand reductions from having the batteries. Now Fred also mentioned to you that there are incentives for running all-electric buildings. The D O E R, the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources has created a program called the Alternative Portfolio Standard. And they will, they will pay you money for every kilowatt-hour of energy you use to heat your own building with electric sources. And what we found and modeled is that by heating our building with a ground-source heat pump, we would be generating $37,000 a year to the town. So we go from a situation where we would be paying out $250,000 to a situation where we're lowering our energy costs for the building by 60%. And one of the things that Fred is talking about is we said, when we talked to our town manager and our permanent building committee, how are we going to look at this from a financial perspective? And a lot of people tend to think about, I'm going to model my building based on how much money it's going to cost upfront and some, you know, how many years is it going to take me to pay back? It's sort of the classical way of thinking about things. We said, we're going to think about our buildings differently. How many of you, let me ask you a question, how many of you pay for a building in cash? Well, none of us pay for a building in cash, you can't do that, you bond your building. And in Lexington, this particular building is bonded over 30 years. So we took our cost of, our first cost, you divide by 30, and that's how much money you pay per year, plus the interest that's left over. And so when we looked at incremental costs of putting heat pumps into the building, we said, is it possible that those heat pumps could save enough costs and generate enough money through the alternative energy credits to offset to, to make a positive return, a positive cash flow for the town from the very first day we moved in? And the town manager, what you're, the slide you're looking at here said, I want to do this on a scenario-based situation. I want to look at it, if interest rates are low, if interest rates are high, I want to look at it, if, if energy costs are low, if energy costs are high, I want to look at it in the, if, if we need a lot of ground-source heat pump wells, or we need a small amount of ground-source heat pump wells. He said, I want to look at all of these things together. And so what we did was we modeled, what you're looking at here below the line is what we would be seeing for increased debt service in terms of a building in order to achieve the all-electric healthy building that we desired with solar and storage. And what we found is that by doing this in an integrated way, by looking at the savings we can get from solar, the savings we can get from the energy storage, the save, the incentive revenue we could earn from the state, from having heat pumps. And then looking at a couple of other ancillary costs, we said, if we took the absolute worst case, our highest level cost in terms of the biggest ground-source heat pump we could have and the worst interest rate we could have and, and, and looked at the least amount of gain that we could get, like if solar wasn't doing very well and energy storage didn't do as much as we thought and the energy savings didn't come as well as we thought and the AEC came in at the absolute minimum. And what we found is if we took the absolute worst case for the benefits, we took the absolute worst case for the costs, we were always ahead in any of these scenarios. And so that's where we are right now, is we have moved into this building that is going to generate more energy than it uses. It's going to be the healthiest building in the town's history. Because at the same time that we designed this building to be all-electric and energy-efficient, we said, we need to do this in a way that makes it the healthiest possible building for our students and provides the best cognitive performance for our students. We found that by increasing ventilation rates, at the same time as working on our envelope, we could achieve all of those goals together. So the way that works is you need to select a design team that really has experience doing this. And these were our standards for selecting our design team. We would suggest that any town that hires a team that really has good understanding of how to design net-zero buildings might be a good team to hire in order to do your own evaluation and see if you can validate whether this kind of thing is also possible for Medfield. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Should we take, see if there are any questions before your slides are, are, are gone? Perhaps, would that be okay, Jim?
Yeah, absolutely. I would just ask if we, copies of your slides, Mark, they're very helpful, I think.
Mark's slides were put up on the Medfield, Town of Medfield website under the Energy Committee, thanks to Nick, with Nick's help, thank you, Nick. We did that back a few months ago because they blew us away. This one in particular. So I think this one bears a lot of scrutiny and I'd suggest if Selectmen want to ask any questions about this one before Jim makes his comments.
Happy to go first. A couple of things, Mark, the, first off, thanks very much for the presentation and this has been very helpful to get a sense of how you're thinking about the finances. I just want to make sure the AEC revenue here, which is not the major component, that's alternative energy credits, so that's incentives?
Exactly.
Okay. I was struck by the size of the energy storage piece of the bar on the, on the upside being actually bigger than the solar savings. Is that driven off of incentives? Say again?
No, this, it was shocking to us. What, what we found out is if you take a look at this slide, what you're seeing is if you do nothing, if you do a conventional design, you'll probably be splitting, you know, 40, 60, 45, 55% in terms of the, the energy costs for the building in peak demand charges versus usage charges. And we said, would it be possible to drop these peak demand charges down? And the answer came back, yes. The interesting thing is that we can cut our peak demand charges, what it essentially does is you, you use the battery to charge it up at night. And then during the day, when your building's cranking away, you discharge the battery to knock down those peaks. Now, you can't knock down the peaks to zero, there's a lot of technical reasons why that is, you can probably knock them down by half or so. But then the interesting thing is that Eversource and this has introduced something called the Connected Solutions Program, where they encourage you to discharge your battery at times they ask you to, and that's what this little model is here. We're discharging in the afternoon. And that provides a benefit to the utility and the utility pays you for that benefit because it's cheaper for them rather than to go and put new peaking power plants online and transmission lines and stuff like that. So we're, we're helping them run the grid by putting the battery in.
When I look at this bottom, when I look at that bottom chart, I just want to make sure I understand that the blue here says net demand, if I just, without doing the actual area under the curve here, I think I see more that you're selling to the utility than you're actually buying from, so it's a net, it is truly a net positive in terms of net to the utility?
Yeah, this is September, it wouldn't be the same thing in December.
Got it, okay.
Over the course of a year.
Okay. Another question, the $16,000 in health benefits, is that a true economic benefit or is that a projected?
That is not, no, that is not an economic benefit, that's a, that's, that's what we would attribute the value of going solar on the thing from a climate perspective, so it's a health benefit, it's a global health benefit, it's not something that you would achieve for yourself.
Okay, all the others though are.
Yes.
The others are all true economic benefits.
Exactly.
Okay. Then I had one more question, and I don't know if you can answer it or not. In my head, I'm thinking about, if we'd had this conversation 15 years ago, where there was no storage and there were solar panels and the solar panels would have been really expensive, we would have had one kind of a conversation on economics. And when you look at what's happened with solar panels, we're having a different kind of conversation around economics of solar now. I, I am not familiar with storage technology, but for at least 10 years, I've recognized storage technology was the key to getting solar to make sense. You have a sense of where the solar technology is, what I'm looking for is a qualitative sense of where it is in kind of the, the curve toward progress and cost-effectiveness on the storage side, kind of comparable to what happened with solar panels.
Absolutely. What you're, what, what you're seeing is that both solar and storage have learning effects, essentially. What happens is every time you double production of solar, the price comes down, you know, 17%. We're seeing higher learning rates for, for storage right now. In the last four years, the storage prices have come down 85% in the last four years. So it didn't really even make sense two years ago to be talking about storage in a situation like this. It probably didn't even make sense a year ago. We were betting when we said we were going to go with storage that the prices would get to the point that it made sense, and it did. Three years from now, when you build your building, you're only going to be better off economically, it's going to cost you way less in order to put storage in your building. The other really interesting thing that most people don't realize is that solar is really cheap right now. And the more solar you put in the building, the less storage you need in order to do the same effect. Because the solar carries the burden.
And I had one last question around, you know, recognizing the building that we're talking about is whichever, whichever options we choose, it's a very expensive building. I've certainly been sensitive to the tax impact of whatever that is, quite, quite aside, I understand the life cycle arguments, but there's also what people have to pay for upfront in a building. If I followed what you said here, though, it almost sounded like, at the very least, the incremental cost of this installation was more than covered by the positive cash flow over the years that you're financing it, did I follow that right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we didn't, we're not financing the solar or the storage on our nickel. So the way this works right now is there's great tax credits for people who own solar and storage, which of course, as you well know, as Board of Selectmen, the town pays zero taxes, so what we did was we partnered with another company and they have purchased the solar and the storage, they're taking those tax benefits and passing the savings on to us. So we have done this whole solar and storage without any capital cost to the town at all.
Okay.
So the capital cost that you're looking at here are the capital costs of going with a ground-source heat pump. The reason we went with the ground-source heat pump as opposed to an air-source heat pump was because our maintenance folks were much more comfortable with maintaining ground-source heat pumps than air-source heat pumps. It actually turned out that the air-source heat pump design was less initial cost than the grounds, than, than even the conventional fossil-fuel base case that we looked at.
So I want to make sure that I understood what you just said, there are other, for the actual installation, there are other capital costs. So I want to make sure that I understood what you just said. There are other, for the actual installation, there are other capital costs for equipment, but basically the financing of those capital costs is. Is but fundamentally covered through the selling of the tax credits. So I don't see that total. What I'm getting at is at some point here, we may get an estimated cost of this full project, which would include. What I think you're saying, capital costs that will have tax credits associated with them that will not be out of pocket capital cost for the town.
Yes, what we did, what we did was we we submitted our designs without solar storage to MSBA. And we contracted separately to another third party firm to do the solar and storage. So it was completely separate and it didn't go to the town meeting or tax levy or anything. We're getting our solar and storage benefits. Uh on a on a what we call a PPA, Power Purchase Agreement.
Okay. Mark, thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Mr. Mark Gucci, any questions?
I know, but thank you. I really appreciate it. Great presentation.
Thank you so much.
Should we also ask Mike if Mike Quinlan is still on the line? Mike, have you got any questions?
I am still here. Um yeah, I I mean, I could go on for hours, probably. Cause I'd love to, I'd love to see some more data. Um I guess my big question is, um I believe this is all modeled data at this point.
Yes.
Okay.
So you're right. We don't, we don't live in model buildings.
Right. And so and and I know you know that as well. Um and I I'm not saying that as a as a gotcha by any stretch, I cause I do believe a lot of this data. Um but I do believe that um you know, there's there's some of this that we I'd like to understand better before uh I um. Fully pass any judgment on it, but um ultimately, it's not, it's not my role to pass judgment on this in terms of setting uh so uh energy policy. Um which is why I've um discussed this project with uh.
Right.
Mr. Davis and the Energy Committee. Um but I do appreciate this. I find it uh very interesting data. Um I'd love to learn more and um and I may I may reach out to you. Not just for this project, but I also manage uh these MSBA projects for other towns.
Happy to do that. The second, this is the second school we've done this for. We also did it for a twenty thousand square foot uh preschool that we moved into in September. And that school is gonna generate uh two and a half times more energy than it uses because it's only a uh you know, seventy-two student school.
It has probably been a lot of less efficiency of scale.
We got much more parking lot around it per person, per student.
Uh um thank you. If you if you don't mind, um and if Fred does the moment, I'd love to reach out and just uh talk things through with you on what you'd be able to achieve.
Love to do that. Love to do that anytime.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Mark, that was a great presentation. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate having and we're honored to have a selectman from another town come and join us at our select board meeting. So thank you very much for doing so.
It's a pleasure to be.
Are you able to stay a few more minutes until the end of our presentation?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Excellent. Mr. Chairman, there's actually another question uh from John Thompson uh who says sprawl isn't good. If the building was taller than two stories, wouldn't that cost less due to a smaller footprint? Is there benefit to net zero if the rest of the community isn't?
So who understands the question? I I see.
You know. It's sort of like the the if you, any any project that you can do that you can generate more energy than it's needed, it's going to be helpful. Now, is it better for the whole community to go net zero? Sure. Is it possible for the whole community to go net zero? No. It's just not. You know, the facts are that there are very few buildings that are surrounded by big parking lots. So you have a school with uh athletic fields and parking lots and not a lot of shade trees around it. This is a very unusual situation. It's not something that's gonna be able to happen across your whole community. Uh so yes, would I like every building to be net zero? Absolutely. Is it possible? No. We have maybe, you know, if you look at residential homes or whatever, at least in Lexington, maybe only twenty percent of them have a sunny, south facing uh you know, good solar roof. I'm not sure if I've answered the question, Christine, but.
I would also add to that um and I appreciate that. So the reason he mentions parking is simply because. You know, oftentimes in order to get these buildings to a net zero, um the size of the array is is fairly significant and has to be. Uh you can't just be on the roof uh as we did on the public safety building. Um and sometimes depending on the site that's chosen by the municipality, sometimes we're even offsite. Um through uh PPAs and Power Purchase Agreements from offsite renewable energy. Um so that's a whole nother issue. I I don't want to go down the rabbit hole. Um I I do want to address just in terms of the efficiency of the building. Um certainly, um the more compact the footprint. The more compact the envelope, the more efficient the building will be. And that's the first step. Um what in in net zero, the first step is getting to a super insulated envelope. And what really what that's about is making sure the building is consuming the least amount of energy possible. Um so it's not just, you know, having a standard building, um you know, with leaky windows and and such. So we gotta make sure the envelope is um is um properly insulated. Um that usually means triple glazing. That means high R values and insulation on on both the roof and the uh facades. Um and the the lesser amount of facade um you have, the more efficient and lesser glass you have, the more efficient your building will be. So your point's well taken, John.
We did actually design the building. Uh so Fred mentioned a policy. Uh the Town of Lexington adopted a integrated design and building policy in the last year. That says we should be uh and making our number one priority in design to be the health of the uh staff and students in the building. And so one of the things we've done is is mandate that we pick up all the indoor air quality points from LEED. Uh so we have a higher level of ventilation than the typical um than the typical high energy efficiency building. We decided health is more important than energy efficiency. We're willing to pay more for our energy in order to optimize for the health of our students.
So Fred, you want to have Jim then present to us?
Please, that'd be great, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any slides. I'm just gonna talk here, but uh my name is Jim Nail. I'm a twenty-five year resident of Medfield at ninety-seven Park Street. Uh I'm also a certified home energy rating system uh raider, known as the HERS system. I'll I'll get back to why that's relevant in a moment, but I'm also going to really echo Fred's theme here of this paradigm shift that we're going through. Um and it starts with the idea of, you know, buildings are not simply a collection of different components. They're actually a system where each of those components affects the other. And over the last ten, fifteen years or so, this building science idea of building as a system has come into play. Which is a big change in the way buildings have been thought of and designed and built. So that's one of those things where in a paradigm shift, you need to sort of abandon some of the old ways you've uh been thinking about things. And open up to this idea that there are new ways of thinking about things like this. Uh the HERS rating system is a good example of that. Uh it's been in existence about ten, twelve years. Um was actually originated by the finance industry, by the residential mortgage industry. Who, as they looked at these changes in energy efficiency and and energy technology. Uh understood the fact that by lowering energy bills, that would change their underwriting criteria. That a a person, uh the home buyer could actually afford a higher principal amount if his energy bills were lower. And so the HERS rating was created so that that could become part of the underwriting process and uh you know, enable. These kinds of minor incremental costs, but still incremental costs, but you know, keep it affordable for consumers. So the the finance industry has seen. This benefit and is out encouraging that. Uh now, obviously, this building is a much higher scale, but the the basic principles are the same. And we've heard uh Mark allude to the fact that up in Lexington, when they really looked at the design closely. They saw that they could reduce the energy use by about fifty percent through some of those uh building envelope things that Mike Quinlan just mentioned, windows, insulation, air ceiling, et cetera. Um. So this, you know, continues to change. We've heard about the technology changes that have happened very quickly over the last five to ten years and are continuing. But again, make all of this uh even more feasible than ever. So all of that feeds into the decision here, and which I think is another sort of paradigm shift of are we looking at first cost and the size of the bond? Or are we looking at a building that, like the Dale Street School existing, will be around for seventy years? And so is this a uh decision around the bond we're going to need to take to the market in twenty twenty-one or twenty-two, whenever that is? Or are we looking at what's the impact of this gonna be on the town, you know, for the next seventy years? And we heard from uh Mark that when properly uh fought through and properly designed. Uh it can have a net positive effect. So all of that is to say, in this paradigm shift, um requires some new thinking. Requires the ability to explore some of these scenarios. And I think that's, you know, ultimately the request that the Energy Committee has for the Board of Selectmen. Uh is to say, give us an Arrow Street who clearly has the technical chops to do this. The uh go ahead to explore some of these different scenarios and come to you with what we think will be the best. Uh combination of technologies and building construction that will present both a fiscally responsible building. And a environmentally responsible building. Finally, um I'll just say one last thing about, you know, the reason Medfield is building this school. Uh is that, you know, of course, in this town, we very highly prize education. It's a very high on our values as a town to provide a high quality education to our children. And certainly none of us pay our uh property taxes so that the school uh and the town can turn around and write big checks to Eversource. So, you know, we want that money going to uh the arts, to the theater, to music, to the sports programs, to the academic programs. So those are all important things that our children learn. But another facet of education that we want to teach our children is how to be a good citizen and how to be a good member of the community. And we know that that requires thinking beyond just the short term and thinking in the bigger picture and in the longer term of what is in the best interest of the town and the community. Sometimes those are hard decisions. Sometimes those are not popular decisions. But I think that's an important lesson for our children to learn. That in this process, uh we can look at this longer term. And not only give them a building that will enhance the edu- educational experience in Medfield. But actually through the process of evaluating and designing on deciding on the design and construction of the building. Model for them what it means to be a a good citizen and to put the interest of community in the long term ahead of short term considerations. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
I have a question. I'm I'm the question guy, Jim.
Great, great.
I've got to react to what I just heard you say. Uh and I've got to contrast it with what I just heard Mark say. I just heard you make an argument for why the town should. Be willing to pay extra for this. And I thought I just heard Mark make the argument that the if you set it up right, you effectively aren't paying extra for it. It pays for itself. Um and then and then I heard you make the argument, well, sometimes it's just good for teaching kids how to be good citizens. I would counter that particular argument. I think sometimes it's good to teach kids that the things we would like to do that are not economic, sometimes we have to make prudent decisions. So they see what we wish we could do, but they learn that you can't always do everything you want. It's just a not always a matter of taking money out of your back pocket. So my question is, in essence, what you said has gotten me confused about how to look at this. I heard from Mark. A picture that said, actually, we're not talking about making, you know, major commitments of additional money to do this. And I think I heard from you that maybe we will. And I kinda need to get calibrated.
Okay, um let me let me clarify. Definitely. Thank you for that question. Um. Part of this, what I'm saying about teaching the children is to be looking, you know, in these new paradigms, that sometimes you need to break outside of the normal way you think about things. Uh to look at new information, new developments, like new technology. And it's also uh and this is where, again, what we're asking the Board of Selectmen to uh allow us to do with Arrow Street is look at these scenarios. There may be a case where there is a higher first cost. Uh and a, you know, a higher bond that would need to to be uh uh you know, floated. To pay for some of these things, but again, looking at the longer term picture, it will pay back and be better for the town. The tax rate. Uh annual tax rate of the town will be lower going forward than it would be if it were a less efficient building. But these are absolutely the, you know, the criteria that would be looked at in this process at the different scenarios to understand. How it affects the first cost of the building, how it affects the operating cost, how it affects the debt service cost. And, you know, align those things with the best available technologies, the incentives, the way the state's encouraging. Uh this kind of building so that we come up with a building that is both fiscally responsible and environmentally responsible.
Okay, well, so my my one response, I guess, on that um is for me at least, I am very sensitive to the total cost of this building. Um I I would split hairs with you on another thing you mentioned. While we really don't want to spit, step in, send checks to Eversource, we want to be able to spend money on the arts and all those things. And I'm saying, actually. I would like to not tax people so much. So while there's some things that go to the arts, yeah, it's if you have a school budget, it would be far better. To put the money from that budget into the arts rather than into electricity. I agree with that. I am, I I will feel much more comfortable when I hear people demonstrating a clear sense of the need to make sure that the cost of this is in fact. Uh responsible, but not simply responsible on a long-term basis. We already heard that all of these savings are modeled. Uh so as I as I hear that, and and I'm open to that. It's not that I don't understand the concept, but uh at my age, every time I hear that, I think back to the old Popeye, the Sailor cartoons with Wimpy. Who basically said, I'll gladly pay you on Tuesday for a hamburger today. Uh so when I when I hear that argument, I and and this is not just here, it's a knee jerk reaction. It's hit me throughout my life when someone's offering benefits down the road in exchange for added costs in front. And and so what I heard from Mark, it was like, okay, this is. Very easy if we're not doing that. Uh but when I heard from you, I I uh I I don't have quite that same comfort. So. And I and I understand there could be arguments, uh you know, there could be long range arguments, wouldn't rule them out categorically. But I definitely would not want anyone to go into this from my standpoint, at least, thinking that that doesn't matter because that's very high on my list, this particularly because of the cost of the schools.
Right. Well, and that's where I think the advantage of, you know, learning from Mark's experience. Looking at the other schools that have achieved the, you know, very low energy use intensity E U Y. Again, we're not the first ones to ever do this. We're not making this up as we go along. Uh and with a partner like Arrow Street who has done this. Uh I think, you know, between the experience of the Energy Committee and Arrow Street and these other examples. Uh I'm very confident we can come up with a proposal or a couple of, you know, options that we can review with the Board of Selectmen that will will meet all your criteria.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Fred, yep, you, Megan, go ahead.
My turn. Megan Sullivan. I lived in town, I think, twenty-six years, so I'm happy to be here. I um know a lot more about Dale Street in the last month than I uh that I ever thought I would. I knew the Dale Street Project. I knew the Dale Street project was being considered, but I was really surprised through my work with Fred to learn that like a net zero building concept wasn't a mandate or just a given for the building. So when I first learned that, I started to ask some other people about that and they also sort of chimed in, what do you mean? The building is not going to be net zero. Aren't we going to do the state of the art? Aren't we thinking long term? And that kind of just makes me think about a different paradigm shift. Jim talked about one kind of one, and I guess I, I'm kind of going to go back to you, Gus, on the long-term thing. It's, I think now more people are thinking long-term and what we do now, how that's going to impact the climate in, you know, 30 years from now. The governor has a goal of us to reduce our emissions by 2050. And if we don't make, we don't do things now, we'll never be able to do it by 2050. So in that way, it is a bit of a paradigm shift. But, so I started to talk to people about it. I found a lot of people were interested in the net zero concept. And I hope that you've been seeing that I think there is a lot of interest on this topic. A lot of people attended the Dale Street meeting that had the questions and answers. I know each of you have probably gotten a few letters from some residents. I know there are 14 or 15 people that I know of, at least on this call tonight, to know about this. So I started an email list and without even blinking, I have nearly 75 people who are interested in talking about Medfield and this building and then just sustainability in general for Medfield. So I think those are all good indications. And one of the most exciting ones is that a student, two students attended some of our meetings and one of them took it upon herself to start a survey, or a petition, actually. And she started surveying high school students or asking them to sign on to the petition, talking about net zero for this building. And I know at last count, I saw 112 signatures, which since she started on Friday, I think is pretty impressive, but it's impressive by the number of students who care about it, those who wanted to chime in and the, just really the initiative that she took. And I think that's one of the paradigm differences too. I think younger people are thinking differently about this. They are thinking about the long term. I also went back and just reviewed with the work that the committee had done. I looked back at some of the results from the visioning sessions, like on December 9th, there was one that were 15 items about sustainability that had been mentioned. February 4th, I think it was, another 13, and it's even included in the building performance visioning. And one of the items that probably needs clarification, but I read it was, this building should be a teacher. I don't know where that came from, but under the sustainability category, it was like this building, you know, should be a teacher. So we're hearing it from a lot of different places. So I just wanted to tell you that I think there is broad support for looking at this from a net zero perspective and a sustainability one. And I don't think people knew that they needed to be heard on this. I think, like I had been assuming all along, that this was just kind of the way we're going to think going forward. And now that people know that that's not necessarily the case, I think we're kind of rallying and going to build more support and you should be hearing from other people too, to see that making this building net zero, working toward reducing our carbon emissions and taking the long-term view is really important to the citizens of Medfield. So I just wanted to let you know that. So I'm going to give it back to Fred, unless you have any questions.
I have one question, Pete, if I may.
Please.
Just as we, as we think about this, I mean, to, and Gus is looking like he may have more than one question, so I don't want to prolong the, the, the MIRBY period here, but or delay it unnecessarily, but as we think about this going into it, right? We're going into this project and people have, have certain views on, on what we should weigh more heavily than others. I mean, can you give us a sense of presumably there is a number at which at least some of you would, would think maybe we shouldn't do this? If the cost reaches a certain point of making the building net zero, there must be some limit to it. And maybe not, maybe if it was a hundred million dollars for a $30 million building, we should just have a $130 million building to make it net zero. And if the answer is that there's not really a problem here, right? If the answer is to Gus's question earlier, that this is going to pay for itself pretty reasonably in a pretty short period of time, given that our operational costs at town, I mean, there's a lot of focus on capital projects because they're big and they're shiny and they're there. But I mean, our operational costs are 20 times our capital cost. So if you're looking at the taxes people pay, most of the taxes we pay are for operational costs because they add up and they, they, you know, the capital costs decline over time, the operational costs go up over time. So if that's the answer, it's kind of an easy issue, right? We don't need to get all exercised about it if, if it's both economical and better for energy efficiency and better for the environment and better for students' health. We've already spent more time on this than it deserves because it's just an easy no-brainer, right? The hard choice comes in is when it's not all that, right? And, and we, we like as a general matter, this, the way our brains work, if we think something's a good idea, we tend to discount the downsides, focus on the positive, and sometimes even, you know, not saying anybody here is doing this, but just sort of imagine that there's only upside to the things that we favor. It's very rare that there's only upside and we actually choose not to do them. It's not always the case that there's sort of one set of good answers that are just being thwarted by Snidey Whiplash over on the side. And if it's not for him, it'd be fine, right? So just to, to ballpark it, I'm not asking you to commit to a number, but what do you see as if you had to, to ballpark a dollar number, at what point would it start to give you pause? And at what point should it start to give us pause? Given whatever uncertainty there is in, in the models and the projections being used, just from an economic standpoint?
Well, I'll, I'll jump in on that and I'll say, we don't need to answer that question right this moment. That's where, working with Arrow Street, we will look at a number of different scenarios. And I'm sure we can bring different scenarios to the Board of Selectmen. And certainly, you know, it, it's very clear your preference is something that will, you know, be net positive in a very short period of time. So let us go work with Arrow Street, come up with a couple of scenarios and, you know, we'll present those to you.
I mean, I haven't said what my, my preference is. I'm just trying to understand directionally when we're thinking about this before we get too far into it, you know, just trying to think about this, how do you cabin this? And at what point do you say, look, under any reasonable, now, it's not to say we shouldn't do it, right? But at some point, you know, at some point, the, the needle has to go one way or the other, right?
Can I chime in here real quick?
Please, Mike, go ahead.
So a couple of things. One, make sure we're all clear that there are some efforts to make this building sustainable that we will be pursuing regardless. We voted last week to pursue the two percentage point incentive that the MSBA provides for energy efficiency and sustainability, which means sort of meeting, meeting certain goals that exceed building code goals that are minimums and exceeding even the MSBA's minimums. So we are pursuing those as a, I would call the base case scenario. The, the next sort of step that I would see would be making the building what I would refer to as net zero ready. And in essence, what that means is making the building an all-electric building. What that does is that means that all of the MEP systems become all-electric and it would include, you know, kitchen, kitchen and, and food service appliances. So building then becomes all-electric. There's a premium associated with that. And also to get to net zero, we would be looking at the super insulation that I talked about getting to certain R values on the envelope and getting the triple glazing on the windows. And we can, and we will help develop all of the cost estimates that go along with these incremental steps. And then net zero ready is essentially bringing the, the building to its lowest case scenario of energy consumption. Typically for schools in my history, that becomes an EUI or an energy use index around 25, give or take, plus or minus a couple of points here and there, depending on what systems are chosen. It typically would require going to a ground source heat pump scenario, which requires some exploration too, to make sure you have the, the, the right earth to be able to actually do an efficient ground source heat pump system on whatever site you choose. So we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more if we choose to go that route. And then getting to the net zero then requires basically generating the energy that the building consumes, at the very least to an equal amount, which would be net zero. Or, you know, as Mark referred to, sometimes even exceeding if possible, the, the energy consumed by the building, which would really be a positive scenario. The, the base case for that typically these days has been utilizing photovoltaics because it's been the least expensive upfront cost, the shortest paid back terms. That may change over time. We don't know, but right now that's sort of the case. So typically, as I mentioned before, that would require putting photovoltaics on the building first because you already have the structures for them on the site, whether it's parking canopies, which require additional structure or on site on a flat piece of brown somewhere, which doesn't require additional structure. And we would look at premiums associated with that. And if we chose to go that route, I would definitely want to learn more from Mark his power purchase agreements and where we could potentially offset, offset that initial cost through some sort of agreement with a private power purchaser. So I hope that helps a little bit. That's sort of the incremental steps I see or the, the base case scenario from a sustainability perspective. The next step would be going to an all-electric building or a net zero, a ready building. And then the step beyond that would be the generation of renewable energy onsite or offsite through some agreement that would get us to a building that is a project that is generating more power, at least as much power as it's consuming.
Mike, thanks for that summary. I heard it the other day and I think it's the right summary. I think you've got, you, you know, the elements, you know, what's involved. What we want to do tonight was make sure that the selectmen saw Mark Sandin's, especially Mark Sandin's presentation, which, what's awesome about it is that it's so holistic. It puts all these pieces together. And that's why I said in my remarks, let's do what they did, you know? So this is, we, we thought this is perhaps, if I can take the screen for just one more second, this is so yeah, okay, here we go. So yeah, these, these slides were very simple. This is our position statement. These are the questions that we think we're answering, that yes, it can be done. And we think this is the reasonable ask for tonight that we work with Arrow Street to validate the model, develop scenarios and bring back the final recommendations. If that's all right with, with Mark, Mike Quinlan's process. So that's our basic ask. We thought it was reasonable. Mike, you wanted us to do this tonight. You, you suggest you had a number of concerns. I just want to, I, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, I just.
Tell us whether you think we've addressed any of them.
No, it's, it's really not my concerns. What, what it really comes down to is that the school building committee is there to sort of execute the process and not really set energy policy for the town.
You said that.
Dollars at stake here.
I'm sorry.
Let me finish, Fred. There's, there's real dollars at stake here and for something as, as important a decision as this, I look to the chief executive of our town, which is the Board of Selectmen to, you know, give me guidance on how we are to proceed. That type of decision is not something that the school building committee should be making in its, in its own realm.
Hey, Mike Quinlan, this is Mike Marcucci. Didn't we already ask Arrow Street to do this? Didn't this come up at our meeting last week and they're going to go ahead and do this?
They're going to do some analysis, yes, but in terms of the ultimate making the decision, I guess.
No, I know, but the ask that Fred had was that, that Arrow Street do the analysis and work with the Medfield Energy Committee to make recommendations. And I'm fairly certain we already told them to do that last week.
Yes, that, that is true. Sorry if I misunderstood.
Fred, you had what you wanted even before you got here tonight. Well done.
I'd like to, you know, so Larry Spang wasn't on this call, right?
No, he's not, but I'm happy to direct Larry if you have something in particular you're looking for.
Well, just generally, generally, we, we want to make sure that the, all the various credits, incentives, battery storage, all those options that came to figure so heavily in the Lexington study that they not be excluded unless there's some particular reason why we can't do them here in Medfield. Also, when, when some of the statements you made about costs, you know, the cost of solar, I'm, I'm, I'm not disputing your pricing of the solar, but that cost doesn't have to be, as we said, a, a first cost. It can be a PPA where somebody else is paying for that.
Yes, I, I mean, I did share some information with the selectmen ahead of time because as I noted, I'm managing a project for the town of Ashland, very similar project, the grade three to five elementary school. And that town, the town of Ashland, has specifically voted to be net zero by 2040. So as they're looking at, they're looking at currently this elementary school and also a public safety building at the same time, they're making decisions about what they want those projects to be. So we're in the process of cost estimating this exact scenario, albeit with a slightly smaller school compared to our, our largest, our larger configuration. It's a bigger school compared to a smaller configuration. And, you know, as I shared, I don't have the data on the envelope, but you know, what I can tell you is that there was about a little more than a $4 million premium to go to all electric systems. And then to add the PVs, for the PVs that were on the building, it was a $1.3 million premium and a $3.3 million premium for a canopy based PV system.
Right, and that's, that's.
They have not, they have not explored any sort of PPA agreement. So, you know, some of those costs, if they do proceed down that line, may be offset. But those are the, just the numbers that I'm seeing. And again, these, these are cost estimates that are as recent as a couple of months ago because they're a little bit further ahead than we are in the MSBA process.
Right. Now, my point to you, the selectmen, is that when you hear the, Mike talking about premiums and added first costs, that you'd be also provided with the offsetting savings, of course, but the AECs and all the other credits and incentives that would pertain. I, I think it's appropriate, if we're going to talk about one, we talk about the other.
I think that's the analysis that, isn't that the analysis that we've asked to be done, Mike, at the meeting last week? Yeah, so we're going to get the full picture of both the upfront costs and the ongoing savings.
We're going to be working with their sustainability consultants and with engineers to develop some of that data. So that's, that is going to take a little bit of time to get a specific to this project.
But that, that's bold. Thank you.
And this is exactly what the town needs, is to get that data so that we can make a rational decision about, about what sort of, of energy efficiency we want to build in at what cost. And, and I mean, if Mark is correct that we can save from the first year, we would be crazy not to be looking at this. And my understanding until this was that the building committee wasn't going to look at this until they were told to do so by the Board of Selectmen. So I'm glad that they've already decided to look at it before getting some direction from the Board of Selectmen.
No, I, I think, Pete, I would just want to clarify, I, it's not that we wouldn't look at it. It's that I don't believe it's our role to say that we're going to pursue a net zero building. That's kind of a big energy policy decision that I think should come from someone other than the building committee.
And I don't think anybody can make that decision until we get the data so that, what we need is, is for your committee to develop the data for us to look at and, and make a rational decision then. I mean, the other, the other takeaway for me tonight is to hear what a value these parking lots are. And I know that the schools have been reluctant in the past to put canopies on their parking lots for photovoltaic, but it sounds to me like there's a, an opportunity for the town to make some money in the covering the parking lots at the schools with photovoltaics.
Well, not that I want to get into a big report on the Energy Committee's activities, but that just, I think I should mention that since we last met, Nick and I have been talking about reviving some of the about reviving some of the solar projects, or one in particular, but really it makes sense to be talking about all of them.
Yep.
Yeah, the, the, the downside to the parking canopies is you have to put in a structure. On flat side or on golden roof.
Yep. If you're doing, if you're doing a PPA and, and, and the developer's paying for it, you're just, it's a question of how much money you're going to get back.
As long as the economics make sense for them, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I can, I can tell you, as Fred mentioned early on, I'm president of Massachusetts Interfaith Power and Light. We're a state chapter of a national organization that works with houses of worship of all denominations on energy efficiency, carbon footprint, et cetera. And we've had a solar energy program for houses of worship for about seven years. And just this week I learned that Congregation Beth Elohim in Acton is moving forward with a 302 kilowatt array, partially on the temple roof, but a lot parking canopy based. And if it's an, if it's affordable for a house of worship who has an even lower capital budget that a town has, I'm sure we can find a way to make it very affordable for, for the town of Medfield.
Fred, anything else that you have to present for us tonight?
I, I, I think I'm going to pass on the, what I just mentioned earlier as a general report. If that's all right with you.
Sure, sure.
And I thank everybody.
Thank you guys for coming tonight.
Yeah, I thank all the participants. I thank everybody who's online that was standing by in case we needed you. We had a lot of technical expertise standing by, ready to address questions if necessary. And thank you to selectmen for hearing us tonight. We'll be back as you need us.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Yep. And it's great to have Mark Sandin come from Lexington to share his knowledge.
Just wanted to add one more thing. I will reach out to Mark. I do want to pick his brain a little on the storage side, which I admittedly do not have the expertise on. So I want to understand that. As well as his PPA agreements. So I'll gather some information and I'll have our team gather some as well. Maybe just a phone call with him.
It, it sounded like the storage created a lot of value for, for them. So that would be good.
That, that's great. And Mike, I just want to say, Mike, thanks for instigating or suggesting that, that we look at this at all and that we cycle it up to the selectmen. I appreciate you making that happen.
You're welcome. Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Energy Committee. Sorry, Gus.
I, I could, I seconded your thank you to the Energy Committee.
Oh, all in favor? Next is John Thompson to discuss Medfield State Hospital Security.
John Thompson has decided that this was a little past his bedtime. So he had moved himself to next week.
The good news in all that is he didn't have to step out because there was a break in in one of the buildings and he couldn't be here.
Can he do that? Or can we insist that we come into his bedroom and hear from him?
I mean, it, it may be next week, but it could still be this meeting. So who knows?
So then, Chris, what did you want to go to next then?
Uh, I just have a, a couple of updates. Uh, under COVID-19 operations, just wanted to let you know, we are working towards making our buildings safe to open. The library has opened for curbside. They're offering that service right now. Amy Coller and I, our facilities director, have been going through the town hall, determining what we need to put in place in order to reopen the buildings. So we're moving towards that. And then I actually have an announcement from Representative Sean Dooley. He has partnered with the Dairy Farmers of America. And on Thursday, June 4th, he will be at Plain Ridge Park Casino, starting at 9:00 AM to distribute milk. It's a drive up event and it's limit two gallons per family. I will send that on to the Medfield Food Cupboard and Medfield Outreach. He has additional milk if he wants, if they want to partner with him directly. So I will reach out to them as well. And our tables are on their way. So.
Chris, anything else that you have for us tonight or?
I
Want to go over the budget stuff?
We, why don't we move into the budget? Let me see. I'm just checking to see if I, I thought I had one more COVID, but I guess that's it. So moving into the budget. So last night I presented a budget to the warrant committee that I had presented actually last Thursday to them, and they have unanimously voted to recommend it for your approval and to send to town meeting. So just to go over a couple of things. The budget addresses both the 1.3 million dollar deficit we had pre-COVID. It addresses the additional deficit of the 1.46, which is solely attributed to our reduction in state aid, local receipts and new growth. As I discussed at your last meeting, we have found $892,500 in order to offset that 1.46. That brings that deficit down to 574. We have an agreement. The town will cut an additional 229,606 and the schools will cut an additional 344,409. That is what's being forwarded to the school committee for their consideration on Thursday evening. In total, the schools will have cut, if they approve the budget on Thursday, a little over 1.259 and the town will have approximately 631,000 that they have cut. This is overall a reduction of 3.98% on the town side of the budget and a 1.1% increase on the school side of the budget. If you approve the allocation as recommended by the warrant committee, as recommended by myself, we will begin finalizing the budget and we'll begin preparing the warrant for printing in June. So we're, we're prepared to go forward with town meeting on June 27th with this budget. Once we seek approval from the school committee on Thursday.
And Christine, just, just to clarify the nomenclature for people at home who are not in necessarily the weeds of our budget. When you talk about cuts, what do you mean by cuts?
So we mean two different things. We mean reductions. So the reductions to the requests. And then there are cuts, like for example, the town's budget is now going to be cut back closer to a fiscal year 18 level.
Right. But when you, the first kinds of cuts you're talking about with the numbers, you're talking about there's a request made by every department. This is a reduction to those requests. When you're looking at the total budget, the, the town's budget will be 3.9% lower than last year's.
Correct.
And the school's budget will be 1.1% higher than last year's.
Correct.
That's the proposal. Okay. Just because with the, I, I know I say this all the time and I'm sure you don't like to hear it, but so when, you know, when you talk about cuts in, in municipal and government budgets, a lot of times you talk about cuts in terms of what somebody asked for to begin with. And that's not necessarily a cut, right? If I, if I make a hundred thousand dollars a year, I ask for a raise to 115 and I get a raise to 110. My salary was not cut. So just the, the bottom line for people who are listening and following along. It's a 1.1, you're recommending and the warrant committee approved, a 1.1% increase to the school budget and a 3.9% decrease to essentially all the other budgets.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
One, one other thing, just to be, make sure we're clear, the, the, the cuts that were made here were, were augmented by adjustments, basically, I'll put it more harshly, abandonments of the fiscal policies that the board of selectmen have put in place in, in order to not have the full severity of this most recent state scale back. You know, hit, hit the operating budgets full force. I believe we've talked about if there is supplemental funding that comes in in the fall. Perhaps in the form, most likely in the form of federal aid as opposed to a, a burgeoning state aid budget. That the first thing we would look to refill would be to restore the, the damage we've done to the fiscal policies with that money before we look at any supplemental, any, any further supplemental budget action above and beyond that, if we should get that.
Correct. I, I've also, I've also proposed that any money that we receive from the CARES Act and/or FEMA reimbursement, we currently have, I think it's roughly 65,000 out there for reimbursement from FEMA. If that comes in, that be sent into stabilization as well to replace the 200,000 that we're not putting in there. And obviously I'm not including the school's request under CARES or FEMA for any of the revolving fund accounts, particularly when it comes to food services.
Okay. In light of the fact that the department budget's actually gone down. Is there anything in the department budget that has been cut? Which if we did get funding, we should look at putting in front of the restoration of the, of the stabilization fund or any of those other things. I wouldn't even ask that question. Except that if we've gone backwards from last year, if there's this, if there's something in there that was a severe action that the selectmen should consider putting priority to restore that severe action, even in front of restoring our, our stabilization fund type stuff. I'm just asking the question. All I want to do is make sure the three of us know how we, how we're going to handle this in next fall, if we do get extra money in, that's all.
So what my, my plan is next Monday, sorry, next Tuesday, I will present to you. You know, we've committed to this amount of cuts. I will present to you what those cuts are. I know you've seen the first round of cuts. The 401, you have not seen the second round and that's what we were working, the financial team was working on today. So I will present all of, all of those to you for a discussion about what you would like to see restored, if there is stimulus money that comes back. And make sure you're in approval for, for what we're cutting.
Okay.
I, I just, I just want to take the opportunity to, you know, thank the warrant committee, thank the school committee. This has not been an easy process for anybody. Nobody expected when we were working on this budget. And we thought we had a plan to balance the budget. Nobody ever expected, obviously nobody expected the pandemic. Nobody expected us not to fulfill the financial policy in our only, our second year. We really had promised everybody we would make capital the cornerstone of this budget. We have not been able to do that again. That's the second year in a row. So I just want to thank everybody. It's been, it's been a process to work through and everybody's been really great about it.
I would just add that, well, this is a, a great budget to, to start with. We, we really don't know exactly what we're going to get from state aid. We're, we're building this budget, Christine and, and her team have built this budget around an assumption of 10% reduction in, in the state revenue sharing monies, but we don't know how, whether that's going to be what it is or whether it's going to be more than that. Certainly some people are talking about more than that.
And I think we're taking the, you know, we're taking the approach that we're, this is a conservative approach. As Sharon Tater and selectman Markucci have said repeatedly, we don't want to make irreversible decisions. Let's see what happens. We're being told we should have a budget. You know, anywhere between July and September. So we should be able to have a fall town meeting and address any shortfalls or any stimulus money that comes in by that point.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it's frustrating to try to build a budget when, when, when the, the state cannot tell us how much we're going to get from them. Or how much they're going to cut our, our revenue sharing this year. So. But that's what we're having.
It's a lot of uncertainty and I think I commend everybody for really trying to move this forward to a June 27th, provide our residents with, with certainty on the, on the budget.
It was encouraging, by the way, to hear that Lexington had a town meeting last night with 190 people on, on a virtual basis.
They're representative. So it's a little easier for you than a, than an open town meeting. So, but we're, I, I'm not going to lie. I was following along on Twitter last night to see how they were doing.
So anything else on the budget, guys?
I would, I would like you to approve what's been presented, what's been sent to you by the warrant committee so that we can start preparing. If we get a positive action from the school committee on Thursday, then we can start preparing the warrant, which we're planning to go out to print next Wednesday. Which leaves us, I would like to on Tuesday night, take the votes for your warrant articles. I would like to include in the budget, in the warrant report this year, your recommendations. Usually you leave your recommendations to be made at town meeting. I think we try to get as much information out to people. You know, rather than later in terms of that. So I'd like to do the votes for that on Tuesday.
Okay, good idea.
Christine, the, I'm, I'm looking at the warrant list from, I had marked out as the 526 list. Can I assume that the list hasn't changed much?
We've had a little bit of, we've had a little bit of change. Our municipal building stabilization has changed. So we'll, I'll send you out the newest list I have, and I've added what the warrant committee, they took action on any articles they could last night. And they, I think they have two or three to be heard, but I'll send that out. I completed it this evening.
Okay. And, and if we approve the budget, you want to be able to send the warrant report out for, for printing. There's the, are, are we gated by needing to know whether we have a 25 person quorum or reduce, a reduced quorum? Does it, doesn't matter on the
I think it doesn't matter at this point. We'll move, we will move ahead with the 16 articles. I did touch base with Representative Garlic several times today. She was hoping there would have been a vote to give us that relief on the quorum. She'll follow up. She promises us that, you know, we'll be the first to know as soon as she finds out.
And Christine, the only, only consequence of that, if that does pass is that some of the articles on the warrant just, we won't be able to take up at town meeting.
Correct.
Gotcha. I will, I will make a motion that we vote to support and approve the warrant committees and the town administrators recommended budget.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Hi.
And Mr. Markucci, I.
Great. Thank you.
Chris, next thing.
Um, we're going to hold the warrant articles until, until Tuesday. I'll send you a good one. And that's, that's all I have this evening. If you want to do selectmen's reports.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Markucci, selectman report?
Sure. Very quickly. I just wanted to echo what Pete said at the beginning of the meeting about the rolling rally. I thought it was great. It was very encouraging. You know, I didn't count all the cars, but it seemed like we had pretty close to full attendance as, as a part of it. I thought it was a great way to, to honor the seniors in, in a spring that on a lot of levels has to be very disappointing for them. And, and whether it's the start of a new tradition or whether it's going to be 50 years from now, it'll be the subject of a Medfield Historical Minute sometime about how on graduation day in 2020, all the cars drove through the, the center of town. Either way, I thought it was great. The kids seemed to be enjoying themselves and the families as well. It was great to see, you know, so many people and families that I knew in that, in that parade. So I commend all the parents who organized it. Thank you for pulling that together so quickly for the town. And I, I thought it was great, not just for the graduates, but for the whole town. I thought it was a real positive event and everybody enjoyed it. The, the weather was spectacular. So well done and thank you. Congratulations.
And in 50 years, Mike, the question will be, what's a car?
That's true.
I'm next.
Yep, please, Gus.
Yeah, I, I don't have much to add. I, I'd echo the rolling rally was, was, it was a fun event. I am really happy. I have my own Medfield cowbell right now. Just something that I didn't know was going to be coming in there. I, I, I've made this comment a couple of times before. And, and I got to say it again this week. The graduating seniors had one crappy set of things that all got postponed. And seeing him at the rolling rally with smiles. Actually, today I drove, I tend to, if I'm, if I'm driving around, I oftentimes will drive by the hospital and it was interesting. And incidentally, this is kudos to Parks and Rec for the, for the the work they did on one of the athletic fields. So they have a big Medfield area there. And I gather that a lot of the graduating seniors have used that. They're, yes, just today I still saw seniors in gowns over by the fields. I think they're taking pictures with kind of that Medfield backdrop. And, and so I think, thank you Parks and Rec for doing that, because that I think has been a big thing. But, but the broad statement I'm getting at is that what we've, what we've had to go through in the last couple of months as a town, what our seniors have had to go through by the, by way of the things that they haven't gotten, what our families have gone through. Just because of how things have been locked up. It's heartening to drive through town. And in some cases, seeing kids on bikes, in other cases, seeing families either walking or on bikes that despite all the difficulties and the obstacles this town has faced, that there's an awful lot of people in town. And certainly a lot of students and certainly a lot of seniors who have taken the, the, the pressure, the bad. And they are still out doing things. They're still smiling. They're still able to enjoy and, and take from this what they can. It, it's a resilience and it's a, it's a fundamental upbeat attitude that I've been, I've been marbling at for a couple of months now.
Thanks, Gus. My only mention is the Medfield Foundation Legacy Fund had a meeting last night. And there will be a, a campaign of why I give that will be rolled out soon. And anybody who is a founder is invited to participate in. And there will be a, a campaign of why I give that will be rolled out soon. And anybody who is a founder is invited to participate in that and, and will get featured. I, I, I just mentioned one of the, the facts that I learned at attending that meeting has been very helpful to me personally. Mike LaBelle's on that committee and he's a, a part of the Boston Properties. Their property was ransacked at the Prudential Center last night and Mike said that well, not last night, I guess it was a couple of nights ago. And, and he mentioned that it was very clearly that it was a very professional job. They came into Lord & Taylor and just broke right in and they had people lining up to take the stuff out right away. Same thing at Canada Goose. And, and so I think that there is a different set of people that are doing the looting from the people that are doing the marching. To me, that was trying to kind of helpful and trying to understand what's going on in our country. So I just share that. Anything else we should be taking up tonight? Motion to adjourn then.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Aye.
Mr. Markucci, aye.
Thank you.
Night, everybody. Thank you.
I wanna split where Pete and Mike say whatever, the opposite of what I say, so we can say the ties have it.
On that note, good night, everybody. I think the spirit of Mike Sullivan is alive and well in Medfield right here.